Fifty-nine. Give it me.
Fully, fully.
Thank you.
How are you, Mary Ann?
I am blessed. I like your purple shirt.
Thank you.
Lala.
Lala.
The meeting will come to order. Let's stand up for the prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you again for the opportunity, many opportunities to meet and be here for the common goal of what we can do for the town of Richlands, Virginia. We pray for the well-being of everyone here, everyone in this town, in the larger community, in the state, the country, and around the world. Everyone has needs. We pray we can do whatever we can, small though it may be, that it is done with your understanding and your appreciation and your love. We appreciate you, we love you, we thank you for the beautiful days that we're having, the warm weather, and the hope that it brings every day. We ask all of these things in your name. We ask for your blessings. And we hope and pray that the words of our hearts, the words of our mouths, and the meditations of our hearts are acceptable in thy sight, O Lord, our strength and our Redeemer. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May be seated. Uh, we're gathered here tonight to discuss the budget. And we are on item three of the agenda, pardon me, item four of the agenda, uh, fiscal year 2021-22, the opposed budget discussion. Uh, at the last meeting, we talked about, um, governmental water and wastewater. And we had several questions, uh, of the town manager, and he forwarded to us information, uh, to answer those questions. And so based on what I'm looking at here, uh, April 29th of the schedule, budget work session, hopefully we can wrap up governmental water, wastewater tonight, and then we can move on to the May 5th meeting. In May 5th, uh, which is next week of the, uh, we will be discussing, um, at six o'clock here at the town hall, uh, electric presentation discussion. And before I go any further, I believe, is that when the representatives from GDS are coming? Okay. And I found out GDS stands for people that founded it, and I don't know their names. I just had to Google it. I didn't know. But anyway, here we go. Uh, so I will call on the town manager to open up the discussion. Uh, John?
Um, so I'm gonna go back through that email I sent you all, just make sure everybody, um, is on the same page with that information. And then we have a quick housekeeping item, and then we'll jump right back into the governmental budget where we left it on at the last meeting. Um, so a couple handouts Connie is gonna pass out. First one will be an update. I give you a kind of tax comparison between us and three other towns. Uh, we had some update data information coming in from a couple of those towns. So I wanted to, um, give you all an updated version of that, as well as, um, the council requested some information on cigarette sales, kind of the, how those were going for other municipalities. Um, so I've included that in the handout as well. When you receive that, you can kind of look at some of the details, um, for each of those towns, kind of see where we compare, trade-wise. I'm also including the information on the leaflet of white goods. Um, our best estimate on pickups would be the volume of calls we've received. So I provided the number of calls from March 26th to April 26th. Um, and the only issue is this isn't gonna be completely encompassing of all of the pickups they do. There are gonna be sometimes when they're out there to pick up one thing, they see something else, and they go ahead and, you know, grab it while they're out there. Uh, but this is kind of based on the call volume, I give an idea of, you know, how many, uh, uh, each type of pickup we did within that month, and that will also vary seasonally. But this was kind of the best, yes, we could get, uh, for council this time. Um, also included a couple of information on the motor vehicle license fee. Uh, you know, essentially this is just a fee that's been enacted, and we have the option to, um, charge that as part of the DMV fees that are on motor vehicles or mobile homes. And really, that money can be used for anything. Um, ideally, if that money was charged, you try to focus that on the streets, but really there is no restriction on that. And I wanted to clarify that. Also included a couple articles from when the county implemented that fee a couple of years ago, so you can kind of see how that discussion went. Just so you're aware, you know, kind of how the county went through that process. Uh, then I was asked for personal property. What other towns, um, do not have personal property tax? Uh, as of right now, there are only four that have reported. There are a couple other that haven't responded to the survey. Actually, the email was a copy of that survey, as well as, you know, a lot more information, but I focused on just the towns. And at that point, uh, really, there's only four other ones that didn't have personal property. Uh, we were asked about utility billing, what the cost is for postcard versus, you know, the envelope that we do now. Our current postcard estimate right now would be about fifty-six point seven-two cent per letter to mail out a bill versus the fifty-eight point four cent for the envelope. So we look at one point six-eight cent difference, and, you know, over a year, it's about five hundred dollars. Um, but that postcard cost does include what we'd have to spend on ink, as well as the time of our staff to print those out. So we feel like that four hundred dollar difference is really negligible when you look at, you know, the large, uh, cost of that item. And then the last item, uh, the employee Christmas meal, we were asked to kind of look at that. Our original estimate was about fifteen to twenty dollars per person. Traditionally, we budget for about two hundred and fifty people to attend that. Uh, but we actually received a quote, and we think it's gonna be closer to fifteen dollars a person, um, for the meal, and the plates and forks and things of that nature. Um, drinks weren't mentioned, but even if drinks are included, I think if a little bit more, we can do that. But our estimate would be fifteen to twenty dollars, but probably closer to fifteen. Are there any clarification questions on that handout before we move on to?
It wouldn't have the handout that Connie gave out. We have, I have two sheets. Is that whatever?
So you're thinking somewhere around thirty-seven hundred dollars?
At that event, we'd like to do some recognitions and stuff, so we may end up looking at some kind of way we can recognize we're just gonna, I don't know, an event, but we'll probably get sponsorships from some of the local businesses. I do some kind of giveaway, or trivia, or figure something, or say something, uh, so it's not just coming to happen at a meal, just something that we can get different groups to interact, and kind of make it an enjoyable event.
Um, I have a question. John, when you say sponsorship, you mean financial donations to support it, or just things that they can give away?
Probably more a lot of, you know, like a gift card, or a hat, shirt. Um, you know, and then I'm sure some of us, if you want to contribute, to buy a thing or.
I think that's, personally, I'll share my thing, thinking. Um, I think that's a good way to do it. I think the town itself should absorb the cost of the actual benefit. Thank you.
I have a question. It's just interesting that, um, Lebanon's budget's not public. Is that common with towns?
They have started the discussion with their whores, but they haven't had a, I think, a public meeting to discuss it. So at this point, they ask that not, you know, public can tell them. They will give us, you want increases there, proposing, so I just think they are, um, some form of increase on something, but.
Thank you.
Thoughts on the, uh, Christmas meal, the Christmas party?
I think one thing, you have to make sure that, like last year, and like with, um, EMS parties, you always have to have Santa Claus come. You have to have something to give kids. So I'm sure we can get sponsors for gifts for Santa to give to the kids. That's a big deal. I think, and Gordon, Russ was always with the EMS police. That's a big deal to Gordon.
Are the retirees gonna be invited?
I believe our plan would be to invite them. With having a hundred and twenty employees, plus retirees, and then if you say, you know, each person can invite up to one or two family members, and that number can grow up real quick. So, you know, we were trying to invite as many people as we can, but we really try to stay below that two hundred and fifty people. I believe in the past, they kind of asked people, kind of RSVP, just list up your plan on being there, and who you plan on bringing, just so we can try to, we need to predict how many people we need to do, or the caterers. But our goal would be to invite retirees, as well as our current employees, as many people as we can get up to that two.
Thank you. Thank you, John, for those, uh, figures. And, uh, with the thought from this, the guys behind the child council, uh, any other discussion on this? If not, we can move on.
The next item that's brought up is the public hearing we have for the budget. Uh, we have it scheduled for May, this is our next council regular schedule. Uh, I believe it's, uh, thirty-five, forty-five. Question was asking, is that gonna be enough time for the number of people that may decide to come and make comments? Uh, so we would like to kind of have a discussion on, would you, council, you want to move that up? Would you want to move the regular scheduled meeting back to allow extended time? What, what is the preference of the council? Because I don't want to move it up, and then somebody's not able to make it from work, or whatever they have already planned. So I'd like to have some kind of discussion and direction. We haven't advertised yet, but we will be advertising.
I say we, uh, I say we give the public a bit more time. So I say we make our meeting six-thirty, the next thirty minutes. Then I have you people come. Want to make sure that we invite all citizens that want to come talk. We encourage it. So I think six-thirty, six-thirty, if you guys give them another, if you have fifteen minutes, I'm not sure if that's enough. So.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think at least thirty minutes, at least. I, I wouldn't be surprised if we needed more. But we could set our time for our public hearing, and the pleasure of the mayor, we could allow maybe four, five minutes or an hour, and start the council meeting.
Right after.
Right after.
The chair thinks that, um, it is a good thing to have a little bit more time. Budget work hearings, hearings are, uh, public hearings are always important. Uh, and they, uh, depending they're well attended or not, but we can't take the guess on that. We have to be prepared to accept our own comment. And, uh, that being said, I suggest that we follow some schedule that will allow at least thirty minutes. So if we have scheduled it to begin, which is not advertised, as my understanding, to begin at five forty-five, we could go for a public hearing from five thirty-four to five to six-thirty, which would be forty-five minutes. We might need it, might not need it. I'm suggesting maybe thirty minutes. Uh, so we, there's a lot of options, and really this is a council, uh, decision. Uh, we could begin at five-thirty, we have previously for public hearings, and begin our regular session at six, or we could begin at five forty-five, begin the regular session at six-thirty, or begin at six and begin the council at six-thirty. Uh, it's up to you guys.
I had spoken to the mayor earlier, and Adrian also, I didn't realize that we had, uh, scheduled the public hearing, to be honest with you. I thought we didn't have anything scheduled till, up to May 5th, and then we hadn't. And, uh, Adrian advised me why that we did that, was to give the, uh, council opportunity to take in the public comment before we actually voted on the, uh, the budget in June. Uh, I had made prior arrangements, and I'm gonna be out of town for that meeting. And I want the public to think that I, I was skipping out on the public hearing part of it, but, uh, I won't be available. We're not voting on anything that night, I'm assuming.
Not to my understanding.
Is that May 5th, Richard?
The eleventh.
You, you, okay. Usually, uh, uh, we, uh, think on it for a month. I mean, that's usual. I don't know that there's an exact law about that, but we can vote on it, and, uh, we can vote on the budget in June, which will give everybody, uh, time to, uh, rest on their thoughts, if they wish. Uh, again, it would be a council matter. I, I, that's not within my purview to decide that. I think it would be, uh, I think it would be behoove us to set a schedule so that we do know when we're gonna be voting on it. It would be, it creates order, not chaos. That's my thinking.
Move the public hearing from five forty-five to six-thirty? Well, I'm concerned. So I can't speak for Richard. But I think we should all be present for the public hearing, so that we hear the voices. So I'm okay with moving that meeting to another day if we can, to accommodate for Richard. I don't have any.
I'm sorry to do that, but I've got.
No, no, you have.
I wasn't gonna be able to attend the regular council meeting, much less.
Well, I'm sure you want to give comments to, you know, and, and I, I don't have an issue moving the meeting if, if you guys.
I don't want to put anybody out, but I, I just want the council to know that I won't be here on that night.
Mike, are you suggesting to move the council meeting?
Yeah.
Or to move the public hearing?
The public hearing and the council meeting completely, on the eleventh, so that Richard can be a part of that.
Eleventh and thirteenth. Any other dates, man?
What if we did it the following Tuesday, Mayor?
We could. Um, here's a thought. Um, we could have our regular council meeting on the eleventh and have the public hearing on the eighteenth. I don't know how that works with protocol, but I'm just, uh, trying to think about the council meeting on that regular time people know it. But we haven't advertised, per se, I don't think, uh, legally, our public hearing. So that's just a thought, too.
So just move the public hearing is what you're saying?
Possibly. That might be a way, because it maintains that second Tuesday as our meeting council. Uh, it's only a suggestion from the chair.
And, uh, like I said, I apologize, but I don't want, I don't want everybody to have to change and alter their schedules, but.
Richard, no apologies necessary. We all have things in our lives that sometimes preclude what we're trying to do. Everybody's usually on the best end. But thank you. So we can't, but I'm satisfied with your consensus. Uh, should, would you, would it interfere with your? I'm just asking. Mary Ann, do you have thoughts on?
Does it interfere with our schedule?
I don't have a problem with the council on the regular scheduled date of the eleventh and the public hearing on the eighteenth.
Richard, how do you feel?
Like I said, I don't want to inconvenience anyone, but I'm not available. And if council feels like, uh, I need to be here for the public hearing, okay.
Uh, Jeff, how do you feel?
I either do.
I mean, like.
Public hearing on a different night? Can't. That might allow us a little more time.
I think that allows for more order of the public hearing, if we have a lot of speakers.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Then we wouldn't have to worry about, uh, a time limit, you know? Somebody wants to speak, they can speak. Uh, I'm good with that, Dave. I, I just, I just felt like, you know, myself in Richard's shoes, I want to hear the comments, you know? And they, they should, they should be heard, and, um, you know, sometimes you gotta do things, man, and you know. Uh, you gotta live.
Dean, with that being said, do you feel like, uh, we need to have an ending time for the public?
I don't think so. I think if we have a citizen that has a concern.
That was starting time.
Yes, our time.
Six o'clock and eighteen?
Six o'clock. All right, well, if everybody's, um, uh, in sync with that, I will ask that John scheduled the regular meeting, our regular meeting for council for the eleventh, and our public hearing to begin at six o'clock. And then during, um, when we sign it for public hearings, I'm trying to think how this works, so we can get it right. Um, do we have, yeah, we do have people sign it for public hearing, don't we? We got, they just come to speak, okay, and they can speak.
Connie and I do have a meeting that night, but we'll try to reschedule that. That's the ramp up meeting.
You might have some citizens that tend to ramp up, that would like to speak at the public hearing, too.
So the council, the regular session on the eleventh of May, starting at six o'clock, and the public hearing on the budget will be scheduled for the eighteenth, is that right? At six o'clock, uh, hearing with the public, as, hearing with public input. Okay, so thank you, John, for taking care of that, and you can advertise that as required. Thank you. Okay, so that takes care of the issues, and I think we have done the right thing. All right, so, uh, we talked, we have the cigarette tax. Uh, what are the other things, John, that you would like to talk about? And then we can discuss it and make, make, uh, make our headway.
I didn't have anything else, uh, beyond jumping back into the governmental where we left off.
Okay, let's do that. Is the council okay with that? Okay, take it away, please.
We left off on forty-one ten police grant, that page. This is gonna be made ahead to.
Government fund.
It's in the governmental package, the big two.
Legendary. This one.
On this page, the, you know, main item is the two grants we received for the resource officers. Uh, and then it's any other grants we receive, I believe, but in this budget, so we can track those separately from those other budgets, just to keep everything in line, and it's organized as we can. Any questions on?
I, I have one. Um, with the school resource officer grants on fifteen and sixteen, they're empty. Have they been approved, or if they haven't been approved, when will we know if they're approved?
That's when they apply for it, you know, when they apply. The, the.
Line fifteen and sixteen.
The resource officer.
It's, it's after line eleven. The ninety-two, four fifty-four, half of it's the.
That goes for the fifteen and sixteen? Line fifteen, sixteen?
Yeah, that's just a footnote.
Oh, that's a footnote?
Yes, yes.
So line eleven is actually what?
The footnote, yes. Line fifteen and sixteen is actually the footnote.
For, for eleven? Okay, I understand. Okay, thank you.
So you don't know how much you're gonna get yet?
Uh, that's just what's gonna apply for.
So we applied for ninety-two thousand four hundred fifty-four dollars? Okay. And do we have a timeline of when we'll know if that's approved?
We should know, probably within the next couple of weeks or so.
Okay.
Still working out.
Have we ever been given less, or?
Uh, the past two years we've applied, we've never been given less than.
Okay.
Sounds good. Okay, I have a question. And this is purely from a financial aspect. How many hours did you apply? Was it a, a part-time or full-time position for those grants?
It was a full-time resource officer.
Okay, how many hours did you apply for?
I'll have to, I'll ha, I would have to fill the application.
Okay. I can tell you how many you applied for, and I'm just, I just have a question. We have a, was that thirty thousand dollars for school activities in the budget?
We haven't gotten to the place yet.
Well, but, uh.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna address that, Doug, if you want to. I think you and I.
Is that school, school activities?
Over time, and.
Okay, if you want to discuss it, no, that's my question.
No, I mean, I'm, when we get to it, I'm gonna talk about getting rid of, is what I'm saying.
Oh, getting rid of thirty thou, thirty thousand for it?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna explain why we can have it in there at no cost, okay?
Okay.
When you applied, and this is purely, it's our job to save all the money that we can. When you applied for the police grant, if you or Mr. Gilbert, you applied for fifteen hundred and some hours. Okay, full-time is eighteen hundred and some hours. Okay, why did you only apply for fifteen hundred and some hours when all other towns and localities apply for full-time, which is eighteen some?
I don't actually do the application. I don't put the finance part, let it, excuse me, what do you say? But I know that we apply for the hours based on school hours. So we look at how many hours schools in operation based on the days they go, and that's what we base.
Okay, if you base it on that. Okay, I would like for Mr. O'Daniel to take another look at that, because every locality applies for eighteen hundred and some hours. So if we had two resource officers, we're getting shorted six hundred and some hours that we could use in that school for after-school activities, paying no one, it would be paid by the grant. Okay, also, why would you do that, ever who applied for it? That officer can patrol and everything through the summer.
And from my understanding this year, that's the issue that we have. They will not, the resource officer, uh, grant won't cover after-school activities. Now, before we did, we actually factored in that, uh, after-school activities, and they paid it. But in the application this year, from what I understand, they won't actually fund after-school activities.
I think you're wrong on that, but if, if you are right, that's fine. Okay, why not use those hours patrolling all other, like the sheriff, when he applies?
We can't use SRO officer money to do law enforcement work.
Yes, you can. You can use, uh. Well, every time the sheriff applies, they can use those officers when school's not in session for other duties, patrolling and so forth. You're the only town that I know of that only applies for fifteen hundred and some hours, for some reason, when you could have eighteen hundred and some hours. That's only thirty-two hours a week. Why would not have forty at school? Why would you handicap the town and short it six, six hundred and some hours? That's, that boggles my mind. I don't understand. Ever, I know you're not the one who did it, but I think we should have Mr. Gilbert to come and explain why he only applied for that amount. There's gotta be a reason, so why?
Actually, we, we were able, during COVID, now during the, the grant that just ended, um, we were allowed, when the school was actually closed, we did get a letter from the Department of Criminal Justice Services saying that we could use those funds for law enforcement purposes during the time that the school was closed, because the money was already given, that it was a temporary status.
Oh, let me ask you this. Let me ask you this. Why can a, a deputy of the sheriff, when he applies, are they the same? The county and the town? They should be the same. Okay, he uses his officers to serve papers and do everything when school's not in. And it's paid by the grant.
I thought that might help. Where'd Russ and Jerry come? We might have the sheriff tell us what he does, but before I get further, I appreciate what you're doing in our town. Our town, um, we're trying.
I mean, why?
Uh, just a minute, please. Just a minute. Uh, I'm just thinking that you're trying to save the town money. I appreciate that. I'm sure it really does. And, uh, I don't know where it's going, except to save money. So to try to keep us on track, I think we need to make note of your question and research it, and come back with the facts on paper that we can see there, five, uh, the sheriff, or whatever. I think that's the way to go, rather than, uh, endlessly, now say, no offense, man, just saying, you do this, we do that, they do this, and we do that. It doesn't work. And I would rather have it on paper. That's the opinion of the mayor's position.
Okay, my position is, as a councilman, it's not the sheriff who did this.
He keeps saying the sheriff.
Okay. I want to know from Mr. Gilbert why he only applied for fifteen hundred and some hours when he could have had a full-time officer for eighteen hundred and some hours. And to a school, each school, that's three hundred and some hours. If we had two, that's six hundred. So I'm. So, I move that maybe the next meeting, if we discuss the council, that Mr. Gilbert's here and explain why he only applied for 1,500 and some hours, when he should have applied for 1,800 and some hours, and saved the town probably $50,000.
Uh, pardon me. I think your proposition, the basic proposition is good. You're trying to save the town money. Inside the proposition is an argument. He should have done, he should have done.
It's not an argument.
Just a minute, please.
Nope.
What we're looking at is a question you asked, and I believe that the manager has been charged with the question. Let him be able to address that, Doug, and it will be a good thing.
Point of order.
No, there is that point of order.
You, you can't tell me.
No.
You can't tell me.
Absolutely not. I will not have it, Doug. We've got to have order in this room. We would have to have order in this room, and I will not have it. It's argumentative, it's accusatory, and I think it's absolutely wrong. A chair will not stand for that.
Watch your butt, Fisher, sit down.
Oh, you sit down, and you hush up.
I'm sitting down.
I am. I'm doing the right thing. We cannot have this kind of discussion. It is accusatory. It is not helpful.
It is not accusatory.
You say what you want. It is wrong.
You cannot, you can't make a judgment, and you are.
You are making a judgment, my friend, yes.
I, I just have one, just a, just a quick pick. How many, is 190 days at school?
190 times 80 is 1,500, or times 8 is 1,520.
Okay, I, I mean, that's what I was wondering. So, we eight-hour day?
Eight-hour day, 190 days.
Equals 1,520.
Yes.
Every... Now, we have, Doug, hold on, please. He said that we have a right to talk. You've been dominating the conversation. Let them say, thank you. Mary?
Well, we, Mikey just done the math on 190 days at school times eight hours equals 1,520. If that is in fact what Chief Gilbert applied for, that seems reasonable.
It's, there are many thoughts on this, and what I'm hearing is other thoughts. So, thank you, thank you.
Okay, everyone's spoken. I can say the last thing.
You want, you want the last word, Heather?
Okay, you can say how many hours that you want, multiply any hours you want, Mikey. But when you apply, when you, when you apply for a grant, you apply it for 1,800 and some hours, full-time grant. You don't multiply how many hours you're going to be at school. That's what every police agency applies for. They don't apply for 1,500 and some. They apply for 1,864 hours, which is full-time. That's my piece. Thank you.
I make one statement. This year, the grant was changed for the upcoming year, where it will not allow for any activity outside of normal school hour. Whether that's where there, you're not, you have a football game, a kid who wants to talk to the SRO, it doesn't matter what it is. That's the reason it was applied for eight hours times 190 days. Plain and simple.
Can I say something? If we will check, and we will check with the rules with the SRO, they can be used through the summer for different act, different things that the sheriff or the town police...
I'm, I'm sorry, you're absolutely wrong on that, because they have changed it, Doug. They have changed it. Adrian and Lety have the new grant application. Y'all have applied, or someone has FOIA'd the grant application that hasn't been approved yet. Once you get that, you will see, it can only be used during normal school hour.
Okay, let me ask you.
No matter if it's the sheriff or who it is.
Let me ask you, why did they apply for 1,800 and some hours?
They will get turned down, because it can only be used.
I guess we'll wait and see.
Yeah, it can only be used.
Fair enough. We'll wait.
It's in black and white.
We'll wait and see how the grant's coming.
Any further comments? All right, so, we're on police grants, uh, and we got into SRO, that's cool. What's next?
No, that page, if everybody else is ready to move on.
Yes, yeah, I'm ready.
Ready?
Next page, we really don't have any money in there, so, I'm just a whole lot of questions. This is essentially, you know, if the funds come in, they'll be added, but we don't budget any funds in there until we actually receive them.
You mean like budget funds?
No, we don't put any...
You don't put any money until after the budget's approved?
Yeah, and if, you know, it takes months, we get some money, then we just add it in there.
Okay, I understand.
What was this? I'm sorry.
Uh, federal state asset forfeiture.
Oh, I got you. Yes.
The next page is the narcotics task force. If I remember correctly, this is essentially a function that we assist with. It's a large organization, but we handle their financial aspect of that. We budget exactly the amount of revenue we receive, so it doesn't have an impact to our overall budget.
So, we're net zero?
Correct.
For this?
All right, everybody's good on that one. We flip to the police department. And this one is two pages, and I'll just, we did a couple items, and I'm sure will be discussed further. The $30,000 increase, um, based on the, just basically the grant that we discussed earlier, we would not be able to use those funds for the after-school activities. We have some equipment in there for a total of $63,000 worth of items that we need to start replacing. And then supplies and materials increased $7,000. That is mainly ammunition. As you all know, any ammunition of any type right now is very difficult to get, and if you can't find it, you're having to pay for it. So, we wanted to make sure, put a little bit extra in there to help cover that cost when we're able to find it.
Question. $30,000, shouldn't we ask the school board to reimburse us for some of that $30,000? Because it's for the school board, the activities, you know, the $30,000, shouldn't they? Don't you think we should ask them to participate in the cost?
We have that.
In that? What line are we on?
It would be 54, it'd be 54 or 55.
Police Department, second page. We're looking at line 54, salaries and wages increase.
Are we looking at the $30,000? Is that on what line is that?
Also line nine.
What line?
Line nine on the previous page as well.
Oh, the previous page.
Okay, before I breaks it out, explain what that increase is.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
55, 54 and 55 is $30,000 for after-school in-town events. The school is going to contract officers to work after hours at their expense if needed.
It's not covered under the 1,500 hour?
It's not covered under the 1,520 hour. And we have a agreement, actually, it's a circuit court order from 2009, when myself and Councilman Ratliff was on council, that requires Town Richlands to provide, provide these services to the school. I don't know if you were on there then or not. And if we don't provide them, we are contractually and also, uh, court-ordered to provide them at our expense, whether we do it or not, so.
Question, does that mean provide, that doesn't prohibit us from asking if they would help us fund it? It, provide means we provide the service. Does it necessarily mean that we cannot, it prohibits us from asking them for help on the cost?
He just said...
I just said they are. They are.
Okay.
Because the grant's not paying for it this year.
Well, that's what I mean, you're saying, like, we had, and nobody's arguing that we don't have, that we're not going to do it. I'm just asking that maybe they help us on the cost.
They are.
Okay. Are they helping on the $30,000, or?
Y'all are, y'all are completely confused. That $30,000 is not a total for after-school. Look at it, it says town events and activities. That was for Connie's events that she's not going to be having now.
Probably increasing pot pays.
Yes.
Where it seems like there's enough training these events that are an additional, a police presence.
Well, before, uh, you want to speak first, Logan, do you have anything to say? I'm sorry.
No, no, you go ahead.
When we had these events, like the carnival, or some of the rest of the events, ever who was doing the events were asked to help pay for those services. Has that changed?
I've, I've had some discussions with Jerry on that. In the past, we've been able to kind of absorb those as a, the service. As these number of events start to increase, that'd be a discussion I'd like to have with the board. For example, the op-ed that Old Town did as a fundraiser, I think we estimated it costs about $1,500 worth of officer presence there. We don't want to hurt these groups that are trying to do these good events that we want to have in town, but also we got to figure out a way to recover that added cost. So, that's something that we probably at some point have to discuss further, uh, if we continue to have more and more events.
Want to set a limit of some sort, or, because we've always provided it?
Or we provide one officer for X amount of dollars, anything above that. You'll have something where we work with them, but we try to help cover our cost. Some of these events, you end up with a lot of officers involved time to help.
I know the carnival, I'm sorry, I mean, uh, the carnival contributed, uh, for just about all the, the services that we did. And I, I know some of the other businesses to do too, and I think the more things we have is great, but we need to, like, I'm glad that you're going to look at kind of offsetting those activities, okay?
Think Mike had a...
Yeah, I think we can get rid of a lot of that. Okay, given that that's, that's the case, um, I don't see a reason to budget any more than... Uh, I mean, I'll take recommendations from members of council. I'm not sure if we need any more than five to 10, um, currently for that. And that would save us some money elsewhere, uh, and I think that'd be...
So, there'll be no costs for after, anything or school-related?
School-related, but town-related, we may have some.
There we are, cut.
Anyone else have an opinion? I don't think we need 30 grand, I think five to 10.
What, what about 10? Because we do hope to have, we want to have events. It's going to be difficult without Connie, but...
Maybe we could do 10 this year and then see. Yeah, last year was, it's kind of hard to look at the last couple of years. Are we going to continue to have more and more events, and then we can look at the end of the year, you know, if maybe assess, okay, we had, we look, okay, we had 10,000 for the special events. This year, we ended up, it was 15,020. The next year, we can reassess if it's adequate or it's not enough.
So, let's, let's go with 10, and that clears that of 20. With that being said, I'd like to take some of that and go ahead and use that for the Christmas party. Make sure that we have that money. Council would consider that.
Well, I'm the building repairs.
Oh, is that what we decided? Well, that's what she said.
That's what we discussed last week, using the 10,000 for building repairs.
I thought we hadn't made that decision, so that's fine if we did.
We're all the same page for that. You're saying that.
Yeah, I thought we went a different route with that. But I, I'm good either way. I just, I want to make sure that they're taken care of, so wherever that money needs to come from.
I think that was the one, I think. Covered the building.
Perfect.
So, does that help with that piece?
It's, we're already on that. Is there consensus to do the 3,700 for the Christmas event? Move that from, uh, town hall building repairs, and leave whatever's left there. If it ends up being a little bit more, we can, or less, we'll have it.
I would go ahead and round it up to four, just in case you have some unexpected costs.
Everybody good with that?
Okay, thank you, John. What's next? I do have a question. Adrian, this may be the same answer as you gave me last time, but, um, I wanted to say, on line 22 for postage, where the department request is 1,000, and then I was looking back, you know, it's never been over 392. So, I was just curious why we're requesting 1,000, or that's why, or you, that's one of those departments, you're guessing.
Yeah, vegetarian, normally they don't ever spend that much, so.
Something else.
Yeah.
And then I have another question on line 47, on the custodial service. Is that, that's an outside service?
Yes.
And can we do bids for that for a lesser expense? I mean, to me, that seems like a little expensive. Is that something that we can do, or is it just hired straight?
We can, you can take quotes.
You take bids? Because I thought that's...
Seal bids, because it's not even anything you could do probably.
Like quotes. Because I thought that was a little bit expensive. I mean, I know the PD's pretty big, but I thought that was a little bit expensive.
I have a question too. Uh, what, uh, do they claim in the custodial services, take care of, Adrian, or John, do you know?
I guess I should say, is that just for the PD? That doesn't include town hall, right?
No, that's just...
That's just...
I have a quick question, Adrian. On line 34. Current, is it? Line 34, equipment? What is, uh, why is that so high for 20, 20 to 21? Yeah, 77. What was that?
Last year, they had like 21 laptops that they had to purchase.
Okay.
But they got that this year with great money, pro money. And I don't have to pull that last year's to see the total.
This all about the police?
So, please.
We waiting for questions, or we?
I think that's 77.
I have, right here, it is 21 laptops, um, and also portable radios.
Okay.
That's what was in this current year's budget, but now they didn't have to actually purchase those 21 laptops out of this budget. So, that's why you see...
77? Yeah. Got you. Okay, thank you.
And then the note for the current 70 is at the bottom of your paperwork. Or the 63, I'm sorry, not the 70, the 23,000 for the radar units, the features.
And you brought that up. That's already a purchase.
That's actually what they're...
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's the break, yes.
Thanks for showing me by the laptops. That's very helpful to see it. Hey, are there questions? Absolutely.
You all said to move how much from the building repairs to the Christmas, 4,000?
4,000.
Are we still waiting for questions for the police department?
Sure.
Okay, uh, I just make a statement, okay? The police budget, I think it's the highest budget in it that we have. Highest department, okay. I want the police to have the most updated equipment, everything to work with, everything that they need. But I feel one way we could cut that budget and really have more to work with if we went to 911 and got rid of dispatch, because emergency services and bar are already going to transition to 911. And if we, if we transitioned the police department, that would save approximately at least $250,000. And if you have been studying in Virginia, the next two or three years is going to be a lot of laws. And within two or three years, we're going to have to put a million dollars into that, our dispatch.
What line are you on, Doug?
Pardon?
What line are you on?
Uh, I'm just talking generally of the police, police budget.
Not in particular.
No, no, I'm just saying, uh, within that budget, there's 200 and some thousand dollars for dispatch that I think if we went to 911, we could upgrade, and then we could spend the money for the police department that they really need, like on new radios, anything that they needed on equipment, because if we go to 911, their budget is 1.2 million dollars. And that would be a great upgrade for our police force. And then all that money that we save, we could use for equipment, cars, and so forth. So, I, I wish we would consider... So I wish we would consider transitioning them to 911.
Don't please if everybody else is. Keep moving on. All right. Next page, we get into fire department. We'll highlight anything on the first page. On the second page, I will point you to lines 42 to 55. This kind of gives you similar breakdown to how we did in the police department, some of the capital needs or requests. As I mentioned at our last meeting, the letter A on line 44 was not included in this year's budget. That was a request from the fire chiefs for two additional, or two full-time firefighters currently. We don't have any full-time individuals at the fire department. That was not included in this budget. They requested $7,000 in equipment. And then C was their capital needs. And a lot of this goes back to the SCPAs and they've applied for a grant. So the total cost on that, if we get the grant. Is not included in this budget, but we have funds that we plan on using for that. But if we aren't able to get that grant, we're going to have to kind of go back to the drawing board and figure out how we're going to start replacing some of this equipment. Cause it's not something we can, we do without. But we're really hopeful that we're able to get some of that grant funding. So the cost of town is very minimal compared to what it would be if we're unable to receive that grant. And there's a new command vehicle in here currently for capital. And then they requested a new fire apartment building. That is not included, but it is something that long-term may be in need that we need to, you know, start thinking about and trying to.
I had in some notes, we estimate three to four million dollars.
I would, I would thank for a new fire department, depending on how big. And you know, thank you for ending up doing something like that. It would be fire EMS, you together, because it makes a lot of sense to have them all thoroughly located. Cause they kind of synergy with those two departments, I think could be beneficial.
I agree.
So what's the, just cause I have no idea, what's the rat, rat repeater for unit 500? It says important, so what, what's important mean? What does that tell me? Tell me how that's important, if we should make room for that, what's?
No. Keith can speak to this. If they're out on a scene.
We're outside.
Outside the vehicle and they need assistance. The rat pack allows them to talk from their portable to their vehicle and the vehicle sends it out for communication.
We don't have one of those currently? So if they're outside the vehicle and they can't hear anything?
They don't have any contact. If they're.
Really? I don't like that very much.
They don't either.
It's very dangerous.
Perfect, cause would that be just for the new vehicle or is that for another vehicle?
If they transition to 911, is that still true? Yes. I mean, does it still have to happen?
I'm not supposed to talk about dispatch. I'm not supposed to talk about dispatch.
Let's ask. Ask Keith a question. So no matter if we go to, no matter if we go to dispatch, you still need that?
I mean, if you got a 911, you would still need that?
All right.
Well, I. Pardon?
We want to keep our channel because it's Virginia State Fire.
I mean.
Us and Blacksburgers only two accept western.
Have you, have you met with? You're going to choose not to meet with them, okay, before we did that, I mean, I want you to have everything that you need. But could you bring that up with them and make sure you need that when you transition? Pardon?
I know I leave that, cause I can't hit the repeater. That's what we're doing.
Even to get to 911? Okay, even with 91, okay, okay.
We're not here in town, at certain places in town, we cannot hit the repeater.
Yeah, I just want.
The wattage on the radios give.
Pardon?
The wattage on the radios are here.
Okay.
Nine watts and 20 some watts.
Yeah. Well, I mean, if you need them, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
I'm sorry. But so with all due respect, the conversation needs to be with council.
Are the, the two full-time firefighters, are they going to be cross-trained fire and rescue?
They were cut, but ideally.
I mean. They're not included in the recommended, but if they were, would they be ideally?
That would be the intent, they'd be cross-trained.
I, I think it's a good idea.
Mike, do you have a question?
Well, more like a statement. John. Let's have you follow up with Keith. And if, if. If in fact that is need, he says it's needed and I believe him. If that's. If that's needed, I want you to come back and let us know that. And. If that's, if that's that important and I trust his opinion. I want to make that happen. Okay? So just let us follow up and if he's meeting Tuesday, then we'll know for sure by the next meeting if. If that's the case, then we should, we should budget through that.
Can I make a statement? You may.
Thank you, sir. If we trim our budget. And not raise taxes, which there's plenty of that in the budget that we could trim. That we really don't need and would never miss. And if we went to. 911, the 250,000 that we saved. We need a downtown. You know, everything centrally located where we can bring everyone downtown. The town could pursue, and I've talked to several business leaders that will help us get the money. Probably more than 10 million, probably 12, that they can help us with, with your help, Mr. Daniels. And we can get probably 1% interest or something over like 30 years. For that $10 million, that 250,000 would make the payment. On that 10 million, we could build a new police station. We could build a new far and rescue. And we can move the wreck and spend three or four million dollars downtown renovating the police station. And downtown, we would have a new police station, a new far and rescue. And we would have a new rec center. And that new rec center, it's a treasure. If we had it centrally located like at the police station. And redone all that with three or four million dollars, it would draw six or 700 people downtown. Every day, instead of riding through Saturday and seeing no one on the streets. Where the wreck is now, it's hidden, no one wants to go there. If Cedar Bluff goes, they go there and go back to Cedar Bluff. We need to draw everybody downtown. And if we borrowed 10 to 12 million. And built a whole new downtown. It would change the face of Richlands.
I appreciate what you're saying. I think that you're, conceptually you're talking, but right now we're on to try to understand that we are on. Trying to wrap up fire.
Yeah, I was trying to see what you could do if you trimmed the budget and you trimmed.
That's good, we'll flip to the next page, so we'll see some rescue. Not a whole lot of changes in this one. If you flip to the second page where some of the notes are, there's a few small increases. And some, few small decreases, as I mentioned. The line 54 at our last meeting, we can cut that $5,000 if they were able to purchase those. Laptops in this year's budget. So I believe we'd be able to cut that $5,000.
Is it, is it budget there currently?
It is 773. Yes. We'll take five off of that.
How would council feel about? How would council feel about using the 2,000 from that rescue? And using it for the repeater for fire? Still save them three grand here, but move that over. Anybody have any?
I'm trying to understand what you're asking.
So we're going to save, we're going to save five grand from computers here. And, and we're going to either take that off this budget or leave it there. Or we can allocate 2,000 of that to fire and give them the potential repeater that they need.
Is the repeater actually in the budget?
No, that's right, it's not in the budget.
I think that's.
Correct, John? It's not in the budget? Oh, it is in the budget. Okay, I thought it was not in the budget. Okay, so the repeater's in the budget. It just sounds good. When I saw important, I was like, okay, maybe that's, we need to, you know, take a look at this and make sure it's in. Okay, I get you. So it's in there then?
Fire, full-time employees, garage store and a new facility. Perfect.
So would that one piece of equipment operate for all of the radios? Cause I don't know, I've never used them.
I don't know who is able to address that, to talk about it.
Would that, would that be?
I defer to Richard. The rat pack repeater, is that for one vehicle or would that be for multiple?
Does that operate for the entire radio system?
No, it's for unit 500.
So we'd need probably more than.
Which one's unit 500, which one is that?
Counsel, I don't know.
It's coming in.
Okay.
And may not explain it very well, I never was firefighter. When you're out. We have a repeater that bounces off, you know, when you talk to dispatch. So when the truck talks on the radio. It hits the repeater, then it comes back. The fire department's repeater's at Clipple Hill. So there are certain spots in the town and several spots in Weston County, if they're out on their portable. They can't hit the repeater at Clipple Hill. So they have to go through their truck radio to hit the repeater.
I see.
So technically, when they're out of the truck, they don't have any communication. Certain spots.
It's concerning.
That's very concerning.
I may not, I may not explain it very well.
No, that helps.
Okay, there are questions here about rescue. There are no other questions. Shall we move on to street department?
Street department. I'll highlight a couple, we've got some capital in there. Broke it out like we did on the previous. But the street department, we have a new snowplow attachment, a dump truck, and then a new pickup truck. Be equipped with a snowplow. Three capital items that are included in this department's budget. There's a list on the last page of this package. Break down of the capital that's included throughout the budget.
Are all the expected increases or requested increases reflected on the budget? So if we don't approve. A portion or any of the increases, the whole entire budget's going to have to be.
It would be unbalanced and want to cut many cuts.
Question. Have you thought? Of, instead of raising taxes, just taking another look at it? And if you ask each department, we discussed, where was all this over a million dollars that we could find? There's a lot more than that that we could find. That we don't have to spend and really not cut services. But if we ask each department. Instead of raising taxes in a time like this, because of the virus and all. If we ask each department. To go back and cut 7% off the budget. That would bring in a lot, where we wouldn't have to raise taxes, we'd have extra money to build a downtown and put the money where we need it. If you ask each department. Challenge them and say, okay, we need 7% of your budget. They would still have 93% of their budget with their priorities. Then one thing, when you came in, Mr. Daniels, that I liked about you, you wanted to build up reserves. The only way we can build up reserves and not tax people to death is look at our budget. And put the money wisely where it needs to go. And then we'd have reserves, as I talked a few minutes ago, to build a downtown and to build Richlands from within out.
I think in theory, it would be perfect if we could do that. I just think that there's been several years where we've not bought capital, not bought police vehicles. Now we're to the point where we've got to do something, you know, you can't put off buying police vehicles. But for so long before you have officers out there, you know, vehicles that aren't reliable. And if I was a police officer, I would not want to be driving a vehicle that's unreliable. So you talk about, you know, cutting 7%, you're going to get into, you know, cutting personnel. So many of our costs are fixed, electric, water, personnel, and some of those costs, you start cutting them, you're talking about cutting employees. If you look at the cap on some of that, it's such a small amount of you, the overall budget. I, you know, without actually cutting the services, especially if you look at an apartment like the street department that's been cut and cut and cut over the years. Went from about eight employees that work on our streets to four. And as many complaints as we get about potholes, if you were to, you cut that department back even further, it's even less time they're able to spend on those streets. And that department already gets pulled off for every time there's vandalism or an issue. So I just think that I'd love to be able to go through and say, you know, let's cut 7% on everything. I just don't think that it would result in what ideally we would, we would want to happen.
I disagree with you. I think there's 7% in there where you wouldn't have to cut personnel and you could do a savings. Okay, let's take what I proposed a minute ago. Cutting, going from dispatched to 911. That's like, say, that's a lot more than 7%. I mean, that's 7% of $2 million, 140,000. I mean, just that one department. If you get away with dispatch and went to 911, that's 14% that you save that you really wouldn't ever miss.
But you really wouldn't save that much money. Did you have to have somebody to answer the phone, Doug?
You would have someone to answer the phone, say nine to five or something like that.
What about after that, when we have a water issue? Or if a power goes out?
That's what you would do, Mikey, what everybody else does in Virginia.
You're not telling us the answers, Doug. You're telling, you're giving us suggestions and hypotheticals, but you're not telling us the solution.
How, you have a number that people call this.
But you don't want anybody to be there.
911 will, when you call 911.
They're not going to go down here and tell us that we have a water.
You asked me to answer how we'd get the number? Okay, 911, I've already talked to the sheriff. If we have a water leak or a problem, they would, from 91, you call 911, like everybody else, they dispatch to Richlands. We need our guys there, we've got a water leak. Now that's the answer to your question.
Who do they call?
It's simple, 911. 911 would have the numbers.
To who?
To the.
To the PD? Because they aren't working?
What?
Cause you've gotten rid of them.
You would have numbers to the water department. If you had a problem with any department, they would have the numbers and they're in constant contact with the police department.
I have a question.
There's no structure there.
There is structure. Do you know every community in Virginia does it that way? We're the only one in Virginia that has a dispatch. You're telling me that Richlands is special, that all over Virginia. You're telling me that Richlands is special, that all over Virginia, they can do without a dispatch. No other community has one. Virginia though. There were two, Bluefield and Richlands. Bluefield went to nine-one-one. We're the only one left.
I'm not telling you it wouldn't work that way. I'm telling you, you'd have to have someone that can answer the phone.
Gentlemen, we do, the chair recognizes Mary.
I believe when we had the meeting with Sheriff Hyatt and Travis Hackworth, Tom Lester, I believe that Sheriff Hyatt and Travis Hackworth both said they did not want police.
That's true.
They do want police. They were not going, the reason they said that was they weren't going to force anything on Richlands. Let us make our own. They came to the meeting and said, hey, we're not trying to force you to move your police. They do want the police, but they weren't going to come and say, hey, I want your police, I'm gonna take it.
Why did they make that statement, Doug?
The statement, they wanted to stay out of it. At that time, they don't.
That was your time to be open and honest. And I think one of the things Mikey's saying is when you give figures, when you say, say, for example, two-hundred-and-sixty thousand, tell us how you derive that number. Like, how do you get to that? I, I, I wouldn't say that I would disagree with you, but I don't know how you pull the number out. How do you get there?
Personnel, training, uh, so forth. It comes out to around way over two-hundred, two-fifty. And I'm telling you, it's just a matter of time. Within a year or two or three, you're not going to be able to keep it anyway. It's going because it's too expensive. Virginia's making too many laws. There, you have to update. We don't have the money to update. And within five or four years, we will spend a million dollars on dispatch that we don't have. So will you listen to me now or not? Mark this down, in three or four years, it'll be gone anyway. Okay?
I believe we said at that meeting, just one more point, please, Mayor, that we would start with the fire and rescue and make that move to dispatch, and then we would continue to study the police. We didn't say that it was a never, never gonna happen.
I was just, that was just, I was giving you a picture of what we could do with the money if we spent it wisely. How we could build a new downtown, give a whole new face to Richlands, and give the citizens hope. Where they have no hope right now. It's the same thing. All we do is raise taxes and they see nothing coming from it. They ride through on Saturday, they don't see anything going on in town. It's just there. Okay, if we showed them and put a new face and brought the wreck down, built a new fire and rescue, built a police station, they'd come by. Boy, things are happening. I want to be part of that. Our town's moving. But for the last twenty years, we've done nothing. We've got the same old trees on Front Street and people lose hope.
Uh, I have a suggestion. I think we're on street. Are we? Okay.
And previous on street.
Well, with all due respect, uh, to the, uh, budget and staying on track, again, uh, conceptual thinking is really a cool thing. But, uh, I think what we're trying to do is be rather specific here with each department. So, um, all opinions are appreciated and well stated. May we move on? Thank you.
Next page is sanitation. It's only one page. I've been on the last page just, people noticed that there is some capital that we slipped into this budget. Without a highlight, and that is a new gravel truck, about a thousand dollars.
Are you on sanitation?
Yes, sanitation. Thank you.
We're now on sanitation.
Going on that capital, there's nothing else that I, that I need to highlight unless there's some questions.
Any questions here about, uh, any of the lines on sanitation?
The capital in the, uh, for the grap, grapple truck, was that budgeted from, uh, the proposed white goods?
No. Which line did y'all, Richard?
Uh, the last page, we-
About your last-
Governmental fund capital expenditure, a hundred and fifty-five thousand for the grapple truck. There is a proposal for the white goods fee. I was wondering if that was, if that was asked, if that money raised would be used to purchase that grapple truck. The doll, the governmental?
When we did the budget, we did the budget and then we looked at the fees, uh, but that wasn't really factored into the cost of, we did the cost. When we looked at the white good trash, white good, sleeping land pickup, we looked at, you know, what does it cost for one guy, two guys in a truck? Takes hours a week, we thought was about average, they would spend picking those items up. And that's how we, that was about a hundred and five thousand dollars a year, which is, I think, one of the handouts for you. But we didn't factor in this new gravel truck into that.
Yeah, make a statement. Uh, to offset that gravel, uh, grappling truck, would it be possible? I can't, I think the town should have new trucks. I can't stand a rusty old truck. They need the, they need the newest modern equipment. Okay, to offset that a little bit, could you have an auction and let's get rid of all the junk down there? Uh, and, uh, I'll, if the truck's not ran in a week or two, we need to get rid of it because we don't need it.
On the to-do list, I know with COVID, some of us, it's been hard to, because either we ship them off somewhere and hope they get auctioned off. But I know they're trying to have one here, but they're waiting until we get a, a good time where we can get, you, because you don't want to have it only one person do. We can get a good attendance, but that's, we have a couple of other items that we already have up for sale. So as soon as we can get that worked out, it's in the plans.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions about sanitation? Hey, are we now on recreation?
One thing I will mention is, I'm sure some of you are aware that the minimum wage is going to increase. Uh, when we did this budget, we weren't sure how that was going to pan out. Now we have some more concrete details. So we do anticipate, um, sort of an increase on some of these salaries. Because a lot of, most of our hourly employees that we have are within a wreck, so your lifeguards, your, now your part-time people that you work at the wreck center. So we do anticipate some form of increase, uh, but we're hoping that we're able to absorb that, uh, at least the first year. And then after that, you know, we will see how much of an impact it has. Uh, but we're hopeful that we're able to absorb it within the current budget. And it will impact a couple of other departments, but it'll be such a few amount of people that we think that the budget will be able to absorb it without having to go back and add more funding for those increases. Last thing I'll mention is the recreation department, we have budgeted as if they'll be open at a hundred percent capacity pre-COVID. And everything will be going full speed ahead, about to budget that way, and be able to react if something changes. But budget this way, we're prepared for DC.
So what, what have we, and I think Adrian, this might be, or Mary Ann, what have we done here to cut this budget down so much? Like eighteen and nineteen was four-hundred-and-fifty. Such contract work, I see.
And salaries.
Yeah, and so, okay, so that's what we've done, so we've cut people.
We got a better, I mean, we got a new director.
But we have one full-time director. Right, we used to have a full-time director and a full-time assistant director.
Okay.
Now we have one that does better.
Okay, so we've got a job.
A director can save you a lot of money, uh, on scheduling and so forth. I think, um, she's doing a fantastic job keeping her salaries down.
Any other questions about recreation?
Forty-three hundred is community and civic facilities. We do most of these remain similar to what we budgeted prior years.
I just, uh, have a question regarding the farmer's market. Is that just for upkeep? Is that for upkeep of it? I mean, we don't really have active farmers markets.
Mostly insurance and some utility.
We have the, yeah. All right. I was just curious. I figure that's what I was supposed to want to see. Thank you.
Any questions about community and civic facilities?
Okay. Forty-four seventy donations, and we have one item in there that are brand.
Any questions about donations?
I did have. Were, we, uh, we've spoken at the last meeting regarding the kind of change in the, uh, community, uh, development over into more of economic development. And we had, uh, discussed earlier about the ten thousand that Connie had in her budget for activities. I'd like to move that ten thousand from that piece of the, uh, budget over into this donation. If we, if we hadn't cut it earlier, I don't know that we did.
I follow what you're saying.
And that way we have money allocated, not necessarily for donations, but if we have events such as this boar run or boar bicycle ride that's coming to town, that sometimes they ask for funding, we would already have it budgeted. And it would, under donations. I don't know where else to put it.
Is that the, I'll refer to Adrian, I don't object to the concept, I'm just, is weird with that guy.
Good budgeting there, if you're actually gonna give them a donation, you're not gonna give them a chance.
But we don't know, we have multiple-
Should we put it in the council?
Put it in the council side for events or?
You could, but events under your council, if you're gonna get rid of that department altogether, or not have an events line item at all?
I thought we were gonna shift it from community development to economic.
I think it's gonna be one whole, isn't it, John?
Yeah, that's the plan to shift it to, because it just changed the name and then changed all the ones.
But I guess we would be essentially outsourcing events.
Yeah, that's kind of what it was. And then, there were outsourced too, if they asked for a donation or whatever.
I see what you're saying.
Whatever, if you continue to do that, we have the money budgeted.
So it probably makes more sense to have it under council as a, sometimes miscellaneous or events or, because whoever it is can come to council and request funding.
Either way.
So, uh, it makes more sense to have it under there.
So we wouldn't budget anything for community development?
Yeah, yeah, that would still, I mean, still what it would be used for, it would just be up to council discretion, what goes where, what Richard's trying to say, instead of-
I'm saying that the community development won't be doing the activities. It's gonna be shifted more to economic development. And then if we have different ramp up, or whoever it comes in and wants to do an event, we have money already allocated for the events that Connie would have normally done, whether it's the summer fest or whatever. Not saying do away with the events, just maybe.
I just, I just, so, uh, and notice, I really applaud the ramp up committee, I think they're phenomenal, but I just hope we have the people that will step up and do those. Because Connie did so many, and last meeting, I was remiss in saying that Connie used her family and her church family for, for free labor. I'm not sure that we're gonna be that blessed going forward.
What we're all saying is we already miss Connie and she hasn't even left.
Oh. Uh, I'm good with that. I think that's, that's probably in it.
And your special-
That would be a good title.
That's a good place in the question. Any other questions, uh, anyone else? Thoughts? Okay, John, shall we move on?
Uh, the next few items are just a overview of the capital. Most of these items I've already pointed out that were on the very last page. So if you want to flip through those or have any questions, most of these items should be, see these again.
I'm looking at your street sanitation, recreation. Are there any questions here about, uh, uh, capital finance office, police, uh, capital police, rescue, uh, street sanitation, uh, recreation, uh, community and civic facilities? Any questions about these things right here?
Yeah, I would just, I mean, on recreation, since they're zero budgeted and there, you know, there hasn't been for several years. And we've been very blessed because we've had so many donors to help with that. And that's what we'll have to continue to do with zero budgeted. I'm not afraid of that. I think we can continue, try to help the budget.
Any other thoughts? Uh, so I'm over here on the last page of this section. Um, John, uh, any comments to where we are?
This is a shorter summary of the previous three pages. I'm gonna summarize the ones before that. At this point, I believe we've gone through everything except the Leshful. Leshful we'll be discussing at our May fifth meeting. Um, so I'm trying to, the mayor, you know, I'm gonna go back through and discuss any cuts on, uh, tax increases or cuts on items that are budgeted in here. Uh, we had a discussion, these are go, farm, government, or however you feel that, uh, or item, item.
Well, uh, I, I'll defer to the council, but I, I think that, uh, the mayor feels that we've discussed a lot of these things, uh, the budget, and we have gone over some of the tax proposed, tax increases, which I have right here, uh, right here they are. And, uh, I think, uh, obviously people are welcome to speak what they feel. We have talked about these various tax increases. I think we know where people stand. But, uh, I think it's appropriate to ask if anyone has any further comments about the budget, further comments, or tax increases.
Now, give me a minute, okay? We were talking about the seven percent cut and we wouldn't have to raise any taxes. And we spoke two weeks ago about almost five-hundred thousand, uh, savings. So there's a lot in that budget that can be saved. In July eighteenth and nineteenth, our budget was five million, two-hundred-and-sixty-eight, six-sixty-two. We've lost probably twelve-hundred people. We went from, uh, I think, we've lost a thousand to twelve-hundred people in a few years, okay? Our budget jumped and five, five-point-two million over. And now we're six point, or six million, one-hundred-twelve, two-four-seven. So that's almost a million dollar increase and we have a less tax base and less people. And I'm just wondering, looks like if you have less people and a less tax base, shouldn't we try to cut the budget and not raise, raise these taxes and take another look at the budget before we raise all these taxes? That's my question. How can you go in two or three years and raise a budget a million dollars and you've got less people to take care of? I just, I just don't understand. I just, I just don't understand.
It just to me feels a little overdue. These, some of these increases have been done several years ago, so it wouldn't be as much at one time. But the councils during those years chose not to do any increases, push off the inevitable. Um, so there are some necessary increases. I'm sure there's some items the council would like cutting. Uh, but really, you know, it's to the council now and pressure's on you all to decide what to cut and where, where, where you go from here.
Yeah, the other side of that is, and it's not, um, it's not your, you know, you weren't here and you weren't part of it. But not one time was a budget ever proposed that was ever cut. Every year it's went up. And with less people. And I just think we need to take a critical look at this budget. I'm sure every one of you have had to cut your budget, your personal budget at one time. And you did that. So I don't think it's unrealistic that we don't ask our town budget for people to cut their budget. So we can get the money for what you need. I hate to see these guys go down with a rusty truck. I mean, it gives the town a bad name. I want all new trucks. I want everything modern for this town. But what's happening is we're spending the money in the wrong places and it's draining us. And we can't have the capital expenditures we need and we can't build the downtown that we need. That's my thought on raising taxes.
Richard?
The white goods, I'm really hesitant on it based on the, uh, I, I realize it's a burden on the sanitation department. But not everyone uses that and I don't see charging everyone for using that. And I would suggest that we don't do a flat fee of three fifty a month, but figure some way to charge it as, as a, as needed or as used. And I would put that back on.
I agree with that. I think, I think three fifty. Um, I think, like if you live in an apartment, you're probably never going to use that and, you know, your landlord's going to get rid of your refrigerator or whatever. So, uh, you know, some people are never going to throw out things. We know that. So.
I think on this one.
Flight rates much fairer.
You may, we may need some more discussion to a policy where maybe we do a dollar, something very manageable and that covers, most people can put out some leaves, some limbs. You know, that covers your standard, what we consider the residential, your average use of, the average citizen will put out, maybe one piece of furniture, one refrigerator, something of that nature. And then we start doing the added cost when you have somebody that's a landlord that goes and he guts the whole house and puts all that out there when it's an excessive amount. Um, so it sounded like if council chooses not to do something, I'm just afraid if we do a per item pickup charge, we're going to end up with people that aren't going to pay it or we're going to spend so much time trying to send them a bill, track it, you all administratively, we're spending more time and more effort.
Could we not use, could we not add that to your guilty bill?
I think you could, uh, that you just have the issue of, well, somebody dropped something else off. If I come through town, I drop a refrigerator off on your property.
I haul it to the dump like I do.
I was unaware. I guess I just didn't know. I'm generally on my trash off or get people to help me do it. I paid for it. I just was unaware that the town picked up refrigerators. I didn't know we did that.
It's on a call.
I never took advantage of it, but I should have. But that being said, I just didn't realize it. So we have consideration here. Uh, I think John is a point, Richard is a point, members of council. How would you like to approach this? Uh, would you like to come forth with an alternate suggestion, John?
I think, you know, at this point, you maybe best to kind of hold it off, have further discussion. I don't want to rush into you doing just, because I'm just afraid that, you know, it's going to be a lot more headache. And then we're, you got one person calling because we won't pick up their neighbor's trash and then they won't, we won't pick up because they won't pay it. I just, you know, I can see it. You add into the complaints we receive about, you know, the appearance of the town. Um, so I think you kind of have some kind of a policy or standard. Some of our guys go out there, they know exactly what they're expected to do. We may help with that.
So if, I'm, I'm sorry, but if some, if some portion of that was implemented, would you still be requiring a work order or would someone with sanitation know that there's a, when they drive by, they see a refrigerator or a pile of brush there, they would know that it's their responsibility to go and pick it up without a work order?
I think, you know, if we do like the flat dollar fee, then anytime we try to set up eventually where it's, that cost helps cover and they say every Wednesday we pick up white goods and they'll kind of swing through the neighborhood, you know, the neighborhoods or, you know, double check versus, you know, people only pick it up when people call. I think that's kind of the direction ideally we'd go where, you know, every Wednesday they pick up trash, on Thursday they pick up white goods, on Friday they do leave and limb, try to have a, you know, set schedule. But, yeah, I don't want to rush into, you know, if it's something that you could use more further discussion and maybe input from citizens because nobody's going to want to pay for that service because they're used to getting it. So whatever we change, I want it to be subtle enough that you know, most citizens won't realize there's really a change if they put out their standard amount of things versus when somebody puts washer, dryer, you know, whole lot, you know, then there, it makes sense for that added fee.
We have no charge for it currently, right? Mary?
I like the idea of having set days. I know the town of Lebanon does that. Certain day of the week is when they know they can fit their things out. Now, what we charge for it, that's discussion for us, but.
This fee was cut, you know, we'd have to find something budgeted to cut to equal it out, but I think if this is something we discuss next year, it'd be a, okay, well, if we add this fee, we're going to hire one more sanitation guy. And then you can maybe have that schedule where they, you know, it's more consistent, citizens see, okay, this is a service that, you know, is elevated from what I was used to getting and you can tie that fee to that service. And then citizens may take it a bit better and understand that, okay, now I have, you know, I don't have to call and you know, whenever that is, they come once a week and they, similar to these garbage.
Well, going back to the question I had earlier about the grapple truck, if you provide that service and if you don't have a grapple truck to pick up the brush. And that's the reason I ask if, if this was going to be dedicated to purchasing a grapple truck or?
They weren't, you know, we still need the grapple truck no matter what we do.
Right. But if you're going to charge them and provide the service for it, I think you better.
Yeah, you can make that.
So, so what do you need to do additionally to figure out if you can charge to an electric bill and what that would look like streamlined wise?
I believe we'd be able to do that. It's just, you know, get the call in and then you make the strike guys.
Working out that.
Or and that nature.
So we don't believe that it would be an issue to, to do that as a service that way?
I think we could put that, the flat fee or the, the per item or per call.
Per call. And set some guidelines as far as what that looks like and what those fees are?
Yeah, I just am afraid of administratively. Are we creating more of a headache than what it's, more than are we creating more trash out there that people aren't going to pay us to pick up and we're stuck doing more code for, I just don't know how.
I think anybody who would drop a refrigerator, refrigerator off at somebody else's house would put it in the dumpster in front of Jeff's house. We've bought that for.
I follow what you're saying. Uh, it's a conundrum. Charging for those who don't use it or want to use it, such as apartment or perhaps. How do you pick and choose?
I just think it'd be complicated unless, you know, we just went to say, hey, we're not picking anything up unless they called and paid the fee. And they get a list every Friday. That's just what they pick up. I just, there's a refrigerator close to where I live. It's been sitting out there for a while and nothing against our guys, personally, they never called it in. They don't realize it's out there. But, you know, I could see, you know, you have one neighbor calling because the neighbor, other neighbor put out stuff and it just, uh, you can stir up more trouble than than it was intended.
How labor intensive do you think it would be to do it that way?
Um, I think if people call in and they're willing to pay it, it won't be that big of a headache, but it's the ones that refuse to pay it. And then we get into, we go ahead and pick up, then try to put on their water, but you know, just, I don't feel like we can really do that without them coming in and requesting the, the service.
I see tassels like thirty-five dollars per pickup or something. And then Bluefield's like ten, like half a truck or a dump truck or something?
Half a truck is ten, half a truck is twenty, it says. It says one refrigerator is.
Can we reach out to them and see if they have a streamlined process? And see if we can come up with something? Cause I, I agree. I I think about my parents, you know, uh, and I just, I just can't do it, you know? I have some brush every once in a while, but it's just for every person that uses it, I feel like there's another, you know, two or three that probably don't. And I just can't do it. So I think we should focus more on trying to find a streamlined process for per, per call.
That's what I've always wondered about, you know, because like leaf pickup's huge. Fall right here, it's something I've always taken. For years, I mean, as long as you got it up to the road, you knew that the town was running, we'd need some company. That's something I would gladly pay, you know, I don't.
Yeah, just adding my electric bill.
Yeah, I would do it. Even if they came over and picked my leaf to the door, it's something I'd make thirty-five. Is that what they're talking about? I guess the tassel that they did. If you have to call them or something.
I'd have to call them and verify, is that just white goods or does that, do they do leaf and limbs and that's included? I can just verify.
I think we need to just define that process, maybe even make our own, you know, and define what that is. You know, speaking of the fall, I think we can, if we do it this way, I think we can afford to spend a couple of days, few days in the fall and say, well, okay, there's going to be lots of leaves here and here and here. On this day, we're going to do this neighborhood and just that be, you know, a service to the town, you know, and designate those days and make sure we put that out there and say that. And I think we can afford to do a few of those, especially since we've charged, we haven't charged for it in the past.
It goes back to the, you know, if the council knows we're not doing anything for this current budget, your next year, we can kind of look at what the plans are, you know, because the I believe the same guys that do some of this work are the same guys who work the sanitation of the streets as well. The street helps them so when they're not doing, you know, working on it, it's taking them away from work on the, you know, so if you did, you say, we're going to, you know, do this increase and it's going to be a new person, then you can really look at that schedule and say, okay, this is going to be on this day and that. But we'll, I can reach out to another few towns and see what their process is, then see what and how that could be implemented here.
Okay. That sounds good.
He would have come back with some of that information.
Yeah, reach out to them and see how they streamline their process. I guess it's about impossible to do any type of projections based on calls, apparently. Kind of one of those things just got to do to figure out what type of revenue.
You know, learning curve, it's a flat fee, people keep doing what they're used to doing versus if we do it per item or per pickup.
It's going to fluctuate.
Yeah. If I'm not going to do something else with it or stay out there and not realize they have to call, it would definitely be a learning process to get our, get the information out there and this is how we change this process.
Anything that we don't approve, it's going to be a require you to change the budget. As you said, this is, uh, I think we need to discuss each one of these prior to the public hearing. So the public will know what we're, which way we're, I know we can't vote on anything, but.
General, Richard.
Yeah.
Richard, are you suggesting that we go through each of these opposing taxes or increases?
I mean, we scheduled the public hearing on the eighteenth.
And one more budget workshop, but it's for lecture.
And that's going to eat up the whole night for the, the, we want to have another workshop. Discuss these or?
Public hearing, all we have to have is proposed, which is already received. But the more, you know, we can narrow that down, I don't think it hurts.
I'm just saying if we're not going to do the real estate, for instance, we don't need to, you don't need the public comment. That's all I'm saying.
So we need to have, have it, what we're considering under public comments, if you know what they can.
Yeah.
Should comment.
But on the other hand, the, the public comment might influence.
I agree. Well, that's true.
And it, and it will because I want to hear what citizens.
I can speak for one tax. Come on. I am not in favor currently of a meals tax increase. Given the, given what the past year and a half to two years have looked like, given on given the additional restaurants. I have issues trying to raise that tax on that side of things, although that should be a, you know, streamlined process and, you know, just something that they should budget for. Still makes it very difficult. Currently, and, um, with the increase to minimum wage as well, that will be eleven dollars in January. That's just a lot. That's a lot. I'm not sure how the rest of the council feels, but that's a tax that I'm really struggling with myself.
I feel the same way you do.
Pardon? From restaurants if they raise it.
Well, we have two restaurants within town limits that haven't had a full year of really showing us what their potential is, you know, and that's Cold Town Taps and that's Tank Village. I mentioned Sugarfoot, they're doing great as well. So we've got some, I think we may have some additional revenue that we don't see yet for meals tax. And I would rather see where we are from a meals tax standpoint before I make an increase on that. That's just my honest opinion.
May I say something? I'm personally not in favor of any of the increases. Because I feel like we automatically have an advantage over other towns because of our electric. Um, we own the utility. So we have an advantage over any of the other towns, uh, on those increases that they have. Of course they have to have more because they don't have that money that we are getting. So I'm personally not in favor of any of them. Thank you.
Can I make a comment? I feel the same way Logan feels. There's hundreds of thousands of dollars moving from the electric into the general budget and you can make these comparisons with other towns. But as Logan said, they don't have the electric system to pull from. So I'm not in favor of any of the tax increases at all. In fact, I think we should cut the budget.
Adrian, I have a question. As far as the motor vehicle license fee increase. And it says, which reflects the same fee amount paid by county residents. Most surrounding fees. If we don't raise that, can the county, can the county take that? So if we don't raise that, then there's potential that county gets it no matter what.
There's potential. I don't know the answer.
Meaning our citizens would pay it no matter what. Whether it be coming to us or the county.
I don't know that that pays for sure.
Can we, John, can we? Can we look at that?
Well, speaking of Wayne. We set the budget, the public hearing for the eighteenth, which is my fault. I apologize again, but I don't know what his actual last day is, but somebody's got to prepare these ordinances for the budget. And we're not going to have an attorney.
Sixty days from the day of his resignation.
Oh, the budget, the council meeting would be June eighth. We won't have an attorney to prepare these ordinances. So we're going to have to have something to get to whoever prepares the ordinance for us.
Follow what you're saying.
Without the numbers in them, just fill in the numbers based on what the council votes on.
You're going to prepare the ordinance?
I have him prepare and I'll just fill in the numbers. Cause he fills up with the, whatever the percentage is and whatever the number is, plug in that, change.
And with his current proposal, I think he would still actually be there. With his current proposal.
Sixty days.
No, no. His resignation, what was that date?
I can look at my email, but I don't know right off.
That's what I was speaking to Adrian about, so.
Didn't he recommend someone in his office?
Yeah. Which would make it end off easier.
Speak to her. Let us know.
Which goes through the process, it would. It's actually the hiring process. It's up to you to do the hiring process or can we appoint?
April the twenty-second was the date that he sent that.
When was it?
April the twenty-second.
April twenty-second, I was thinking that April twenty-second.
We are good.
June twenty-second would be his last day on the circuit or figure. I think we'll be okay, Richard.
We need to have a budget prepared.
We should. Good. I'll make a statement on what Mikey said just a second ago and expand on it. Uh, what you're checking on, if the county could do it, what we were told a few years ago that we wanted to do the meals tax, which is, was it six and a high? That the county was going to raise theirs. And it's very possible if we didn't raise ours, they were going to raise it and take it from us. Lo and behold, years after, they have no intention of a meals tax. And that was an excuse to raise our meal tax. So if, there's a lot of ifs and everything. Okay.
Based on my last conversation with Board of Supervisors, there is more, there is an absolute chance they have a meals tax in the next two years. And you may want to confirm with Board of Supervisors you talked to, but as soon as.
Well, I mean, I'm.
As soon as they can do it, because they, they can do it without a referendum now, as soon as they can do it, they will do it. They will do.
I thought Doug, when we talked with him that day about Rick, there was Eric Young and the attorney, I thought they mentioned then, but they may have changed their minds since then, but I thought they mentioned that day that they most definitely were for the reason Mikey said they didn't have to have a referendum.
What I heard from Eric Young was they had no intention of it in that same meeting. He told me and I asked him, are you going to raise the meals tax? And at that time, they might've changed if Mikey has talked to him, but at that time they had no intention of raising, I mean, of doing a meals tax, but that's not to say that they're not going to do it in the next year or two. I'm not sure.
I mean, that's my opinion. I think they will. It's some conversations, but I, you know, I'm being hypothetical. It shouldn't, it shouldn't alter what we do currently. I, I still not in favor of a meals tax currently without having more information and knowing where our revenue is for what we have currently and after COVID. That's just my sense on the meals tax and I'm curious about the license fee. Was it the county is going to get it? I'd rather it benefit our citizens. Particularly than, you know, be put in the county. County is going to take it. It should be, should be ours. I'd be curious to know if that's the case.
Direction, any other direction, uh, from the council for the manager? Okay. So I think we're at this point. Don, our next budget work session is scheduled for May the fifth. And we'll be taking up electric. And then you have several things you're checking on for members of council. How would you like to convey those to us at the next budget work session? Which would be electricity, which would be probably take up a lot of time. Your thoughts on that?
Uh, I'll try to email those out like I did this email that you received.
Yes, sir.
If those items.
I'm going to do it on the same night. Okay. Um, I would propose then that we take a, uh, I'm assuming the gentleman or gentlelady, whatever, uh, GDS is going to spend the night here. I'm assuming it's a long way in Richland.
It's not going to be that long, yes?
We have not purchased a pub yet. Uh, anyway.
It's a electric.
I propose that we take those items first and then go to the GDS to electric. Is, is council admissible to that? That will bid to bed whatever we're going to do on that segment. And then, uh, council, if council's agreeable for that plan, we'll have a plan in place. We'll finalize hopefully what we're going to do other than public comment to get influence people. And we can finalize governmental water, wastewater, and then we'll move on to electric after we have even addressed those questions.
I'd only ask, the meeting we have scheduled for the public hearing on the budget, would you also like to add a budget workshop after that? Since you sound like you don't want to make any decisions until you get public comment. At that point, since we're already here, you have been on how long that portion part goes. Do you want to go ahead and set us out some time to try to make some progress on whatever decisions will be made? And then, um, at our May meeting, would you go ahead and add, I mean, another date or two, just to bid on what's needed? Cause we really, we want to get a final budget approved and the resolution adopted at our June board, early stage report meeting.
I think that's a great. Counsel's pleasure. We didn't set an ending time, so we don't know how long it could go. Counsel's pleasure, the budget work session following a public hearing. I mean, it'd be another day. I'm sorry. Or another possibility of a date. So we can all have time to let all that settle in our minds. I'm just throwing my thoughts out. I think that's what you meant, another night.
I think he meant follow. I like the idea immediately afterwards.
People that's right there. An hour. You want to have some discussion of that nice party here and then at that point we can continue that meeting to whatever. I'm going to get on me. I just don't want to push it off any farther than we have to, because plus we get to July, the more nervous we start to get.
Yeah, last year.
Thoughts from council on John's proposal to have a budget work session following public hearing?
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
Are you going to limit the comment time?
We did not, uh, we have not set a limit on people other than the rules we currently have.
We still do the three minute, five minute.
So, uh, that really isn't clear because we have never said it.
I think it's three minutes, but if before, as part of the members or the council committee say, we're going to do one minute, we're going to do five, you know, you, the council has the authority to extend or decrease that.
At our, uh, I haven't had a chance to talk to you, but nonetheless, whatever council thinks. I think we do need to have some, um, frame in mind for each speaker. Have you distributed the proposal? Okay. Well, anyway, there's proposal John had, uh, but I think right now what we need to do is stick with what we have. Five minutes for anybody who wants to speak, but this, we've never done that for a public hearing, have we? They just speak. So I think it would behoove us to have, uh, five minutes to three minutes, which is currently in place for council. How do you, uh, members of council feel to keep some measure of, uh, some cadence to the meeting?
Is it five minutes for schedule?
And three minutes for.
So people need to call in and.
If they want to.
And we would need to make it public to the date they have to call in by to get five minutes.
I will defer to the clerk and the manager.
I'll look into that. Cause I know that the rules that we've looked at were specifically to public comment at a regular schedule board meeting. I wonder if we have anything to address this public hearing.
We don't.
Let me, let me look at that and I can let you all know.
I, I don't think we do, John. I think that's a good thought.
You can make that decision at the regular schedule board meeting.
So it'd be, we can advance that before we know what to expect. As, uh, protocols were adopted for council meetings. Not public hearing. Keep following. Any other thoughts or questions, uh, about the budget? There being no further discussion, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
And recess.
Recession, I'm sorry, to recess. Thank you. To recess.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion is made. Richard, second to be your end. Roll call hook.
Yes.
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 Motion carries for recessed until the fifth at six. Connie, Connie, do you need this back?
I remembered Rob that you have a question.